I would love to call the select board meeting to order, just so I could make a plug for going to our website. The Jen so greatly put on the link, so anybody that is not vaccinated can get a Johnson and Johnson vaccine. One and done on May 16th, Sunday, 10 o'clock to 1:00 right now. But we have 700 doses, so if we get filled up, we're probably go to three. But right now it's in the morning and at 10 o'clock. So I hope people will go that have not had any vaccine. We're down to like the last 15% of our town, and it would be wonderful to get people vaccinated so we have herd immunity. So again, that's May 16th at Treehouse Brewing, 10 o'clock in the morning. There's appointments, you can go to the link and it won't go public. It's a private link until Friday. So if between now and Friday you sign up, there's plenty of spaces, so please get your vaccine.
And Carolyn, what's the age requirement now? I haven't followed since.
Well, this is Johnson and Johnson, so it's still 18. We're trying to put, I'm trying to put a clinic together for Pfizer, you know, through Bay State, because that's cold chain management vaccine that we don't have the capability for. So if Bay State comes down, we're hoping to have a clinic at Frontier at some point for kids to, you know, younger.
Great.
You know, at least the high school kids down into middle school. So, but this is Johnson and Johnson, one and done, May 16th at Treehouse Brewing. That's a Sunday, 10:00 a.m. in the morning.
You can find the link on our homepage at the Town of Deerfield website, as well as on Deerfield Now and on the Deer, Town of Deerfield Facebook page. So, and if not, call me and I'll send it to you.
So I have a question. Carolyn, do you need help staffing that?
Yeah, actually Andrea, if you would love, I would love another, I know you've done the scribe in the past. Would you be willing to do a scribe? Oh, wonderful. I have Denise and I have Tom Fidenkevich, so I really feel good about that. But it would be nice to have another scribe.
All right, should we call both meetings to order? Carolyn, do you want to finish calling yours to order or?
Well, actually I'll let Dave, I just, I kind of bullied in there. I wanted to put the plug in for the vaccine.
Absolutely, Dave.
Hi, Annalee. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'd like to call this meeting to order on May 10th. That's 7:00 o'clock, a joint meeting between the Town of Deerfield Boarders, the Select Board and the Planning Board.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll, I'll read the, the notice for both of us, and I'll also call the Deerfield Planning Board to order on May 10th at 7:03. Meetings normally held in our municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access and where required, public participation provided in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of our open meeting law. Typical's, typical's, meetings are typically broadcast on Frontier Community Access Television, FCAT. I don't see them here, but hopefully they'll be here.
They're here.
All right, and remote meeting connections are noted on the agenda on the website, deerfieldma.us. So let's see, Dave, do you want to have your roll call?
Roll call for the Board of, the Select Board?
Carolyn Ness, I.
Dave Wolf from, I. Trevor McDonald is absent tonight.
Okay, uh, let's see, Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine here.
Anne Mary Cludier? I think she's here, isn't she? I heard she was.
Not yet.
No, Anne Mary's not here.
Okay, sorry, Andrea Lipson?
Here.
Denise Mason?
Here.
Kathy Sylvester?
Here.
Kathy Witroba?
Here.
And Annalee Wolfko here, so we do have a quorum with four being our majority voting. Let's see, first on our agenda is to welcome our new members. Kathy and Andrea, welcome, welcome. We're, congratulations on a well-run campaign and so glad to have you. And Kathy in particular, Kathy and Kathy, we now have two Kathys, so I, we can, we can manage it unless someone prefers. Catherine or Kathleen or anything.
Oh, Trevor, Trevor just joined.
Hey, Trevor.
Hello.
Hey, Trevor.
Hi there, everyone.
Hey. So we'll, we'll stick with both names for you unless we hear otherwise or?
Call me Kathleen, I go by Kathy, but just to make it easier, you can call me Kathleen. It might make it easier.
I'm a Kathleen too, but you can choose how you choose. I'll go by either.
We'll see how we swing, okay. Also want to thank Paul, Alice and Max Antis. Max actually mentioned to me that he'd been on the board for nine years. This was his fourth election. That's a lot of Monday nights, a lot of, a lot of paper under the dam and really one. And we certainly wish Paul the best as he works with some health problems, so. Thank you, Max and Paul.
Annalee, just for a point, point of interest, just verify that your new members have been sworn in, so they are capable of voting tonight?
Andrea, Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. Okay.
And at some point we'll see some photo ops maybe, hopefully. Thanks, Dave.
Annalee?
Yes.
You want to just, I'm Jen. I'm the Assistant Town Administrator and I work at Town Hall and you can email me with questions and whatever. But nice to meet you both.
We can introduce all of, all of us folks. Denise?
Denise Mason, I think I know both Andrea and Kathy Sylvester and Kathy Witroba has been on for a while. So I haven't met you person, wait, maybe I did.
And Rachel?
Hi, I'm Rachel Blaine. And that's it, I don't know what else to say.
Rachel is now pushing for the max tenure on the, on the board, yes.
I'm chasing Carolyn. Carolyn was on this board for a long time, I don't know.
Oh, boy. Well, thank you all.
Annalee?
Yes.
Debbie Shriver wants to know who's taking minutes because Anne Mary's not here.
Well, I picked up on minutes last time, so I suppose I can do that again.
Okay.
Thank you. Shriver, I don't see her, but she must be someplace here. Good, okay. I did not see any last minute announcements from other towns. We do have some other mail that was received. One, we sent out to the Planning Board a week or so ago. We did receive notification from the Attorney General that our marijuana bylaws that were approved at town meeting last year, but in fact, there was an error in the posting. So that we did some repostings and corrected all of that. And in fact, the Attorney General has approved last year's special town meeting, October town meeting, of those marijuana bylaws. And secondly, we did receive an email from Bob Decker, who cited, who was on the ZDA. He cited the use regulation schedule noted some areas that may impact Treehouse growth plans. I think this is FYI, I don't know if anyone has any comments or thoughts about that?
Um, I think we're going to try to adjust our zoning in for the special town meeting in the fall. We normally would have a special town meeting after free cash is certified at the end of September. So we're talking sometime in October, but because of the ongoing pandemic, even though everything is more or less opening up, there still might be some lag. So once our free cash is certified, maybe the end of October, beginning of November, we'll have, the Select Board will forward some adjustment to the zoning for Treehouse. They can open up and have a liquor license with a restaurant, and that's not an issue. But if they do anything like, you know, pouring pub or whatever, Dave probably knows more about this than I do, but we need to adjust our zoning for that slightly, so we will make an amendment and bring that forward in the fall.
All right, thank you. Dave, do you have any other mail or anything else that you want to address as we, then we'll go forward with our minutes?
We don't have any mail at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we have two sets of minutes that were circulated from April 4th, so maybe and April 26th. Maybe I'll have a motion to approve the minutes on the 4th and a second, and then we'll see if there's any discussion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the 4th, Denise Mason?
Well, I think it's actually the 5th, I'm sorry, April 5th.
Okay, I'm sorry, the 5th.
Second, Rachel Blaine.
And is there any discussion on these minutes or additions, corrections?
Well, one thing I might suggest and is that Anne Marie, since you are, you know, filling in that Anne Marie's, submit them from her, it's not, on my copy anyway, it doesn't say submitted by Anne Mary, Anne Mary, sorry. So that might be good, because yours says submitted by Annalee Wolfko, so.
Okay, good point, we can letter of the law there, so we have.
I just think it also clarifies it for sure, down the road.
Sure. That's good, thank you. So since we do have a motion and a second, and this was our discussion, I guess we abstain? Or, I don't know, do we just sort of forget about it?
You can table it till next week.
Good, oh, that's a nice idea. All right, so we will table the minutes from April 5th. And then we have the minutes from April 26th, if I could have a motion to accept those.
I move that we accept the, oh, no, no. Hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah, move that we accept the minutes from April 26th as they're submitted.
Thank you, Rachel. And a second, please?
A second, Denise Mason.
Thanks, Denise, is there any discussion? All right, let's see, and we'll go back to our original alphabetic order, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Anne Mary's still missing, Andrea Lipson?
Given that I was not at the meeting.
She abstains.
I abstained.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, yes.
Kathy Sylvester? Kathy's someplace in there in terms of approving, just not approving or abstaining from the minutes?
Sorry, you didn't hear me, I said I abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. And Kathy Witroba?
Yes.
And Annalee Wolfko, yes, so we have one, two.
Of course, yes.
Yeah, good, okay, cool. Learning something new all the time. Old business, new member orientation, Denise?
Yes, it's been a little slow going, but because the, the information that, that I got from Town Hall, there wasn't a whole lot, but I was fortunate to get Rachel's booklet that has a wealth of information. So I've gone over that and I'm meeting with Jen tomorrow, 10 o'clock. And so I'm hoping that I can make some copies and start making booklets for new, for all of us, actually, most of the new members. And we'll just continue adding as we go, go through. I mean, I don't think we can cover all of it tomorrow, but you know, get some of the, you know, pertinent information that is needed now.
Right.
And, and as a matter of fact, I mean, we won't be violating open meeting law if we speak with each member individually for any kind of training purposes, so.
Actually, sorry, you can, somebody has feedback, is it? Sorry, so we can actually have a training that doesn't have, it doesn't break open meeting law if we have a training. So I think I would schedule Zoom after everybody has their packet and we can go through each of the sections.
Sounds great, thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for everyone who's been working on that. All right, so next on the agenda is our public hearing for the Use and Dimensional Requirements Amendment. And that's why we're glad to have the, the Select Board here for all members and then also members of the public. Our process tonight will be that we'll open the public hearing. There will be sort of an overview or presentation probably by the Select Board in terms of what this amendment is all about. We will have comments from the public, certainly trying not to have too much repetition and obviously being very respectful of everyone else. Our options after we close the public, well, then we can close the public hearing when comments are, well, then our, our options are either to continue the public hearing at a later date, to close the public hearing and the Planning Board will deliberate and vote on changes that are not more restrictive, at which point then they could go forward for the town meeting. Or we close the public hearing, deliberate and vote on changes that may be more restrictive, at which point we would need to set a date for a new public hearing. That's an okay process for everyone to understand? All right, so I will now open the public hearing. And members of the Select Board, if whomever that might be, if you could.
I guess I just, it's very simple. We have a lot of town municipal projects potentially coming down fairly soon in our schedule. And while Cumberland Farms is a non-conforming lot, we have a senior center of the church, potentially Brabird across the street for senior housing, park project. So we would like the flexibility of having four town municipal projects, a 50-foot frontage requirement, which is a reduction from the 100 in the Center Village District. And we would like, we're not changing the setbacks or anything else. It's just enough of a frontage for a subdivision road, potentially. It's pretty straightforward. Can I answer any questions that any might have?
Well, and then there's also a section in the proposal that states that the Planning Board upon request by the applicant may waive or even reduce the setback requirements more if we feel that it's in the public interest to do so, correct?
Right, and we put that in only because Cumberland Farms is already non-conforming, doesn't abide by the setback. It's, it's really an ugly thing in the center of our town. So we obviously don't want to have 21E, which is your, you know, contamination issues. So we certainly would not purchase it in that, until that's sorted out. But if the library project goes forward, we need to have a temporary library during the project. It has, the library has to remain open. And rather than invest money to make an occupancy permit applicable at the church, we were thinking you could, it would be a win-win to temper, you know, buy Cumberland Farms, use it as a temporary place for the library and then hopefully turn it over for some other economic activity at some point. But obviously, you know, there are setback issues and frontage issues with Cumberland Farms.
What are the issues, occupancy issues at the church?
Well, it's, it's debatable, well, it's not ADA accessible for sure. And that means the bathrooms, and so it'd be renovations, tremendous renovations costs involving just the bathrooms. But there's questions on the foundation, you know, the load, you know, the load of the books on that structure would be way, way too much without substantial, substantial work. Several hundred thousand dollars worth of work. So if we can get a donation of Cumberland Farms or buy it at a fairly reduced rate, because we've been beyond the two years for grandfathering, so it's not, any youth hasn't been grandfathered now. We're hoping to do something that would be cheaper and we could clean it up and make it more attractive. And then we could turn around and actually sell it and get our money back. So, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, it really is ugly. I mean, it's, it looks terrible, so.
Carolyn, you mentioned that you'd like to have the flexibility for municipal properties. I'm wondering if there are, are, if there are other reasons for doing it? And why, why in fact it would be different for the municipal properties than for the other properties?
Well.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Well, one of the issues is the Brabird Road property. We can't access that property actually with correctly off of Brabird Road. So we're going to have to look for some type of access off of North Main Street. And that would possibly mean purchasing a piece of property on North Main Street with putting a road through for a subdivision. And it would probably be, if we could subdivide some of that property, so we could keep the home and maybe put the roadway in. It'd give us the latitude to look at some different avenues to getting in there and be able to develop that property and back. Primarily, our goal is that's where I think the board has looked at it over the years, and that would be an ideal location for senior housing.
I guess in the spirit of transparency, if that second clause instead would be that, that the Planning Board could waive this setback requirements or for municipal properties if deemed in the public interest. But then that would then entail being able to have more public discussion rather than just internal discussion.
Yeah. Our intent is any development or anything that we do, we would bring to the Planning Board. We're just not going to sit as a board and say, we're going to do this.
Right.
Because one, we do want public input and, you know, and we thought that due diligence on this would be to bring it to the Planning Board.
Yes, that's what.
Before we did anything. You know, whether it be the Cumberland property, because if you used applied all the setbacks, you might have been able to put one of those old photo booths there, but that was about it. So, you know, obviously for anything to happen on that piece of property, we're going to have to have a variance. And that would have to go through the Planning Board and have public hearings on it. The same thing with the Brabird property, you know, if we bought a piece of property.
Did you actually consider, instead of saying a specific frontage of 50 feet or potentially less, of just saying that, that the setback could be waived by the Planning Board upon consideration with public interest?
Well, one of the reasons the 50 foot is there is for emergency services, for vehicles getting in and out for a proper roadway. So we really wouldn't want anything much narrower than that.
Yeah.
It would never be less than 50.
Although you're saying here that the Planning Board could reduce the setback requirements.
On the setback.
But not frontage, only setback, not frontage.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Are you in agreement with that, Trevor?
Yes, yes, exactly. I mean, the whole idea of this, and, and, you know, is again, to have the flexibility when it, when it comes to municipal use, because it's for public use. And then the, the idea of being able to bring this and involve the Planning Board is that, you know, you're the only other really elected body that would, and then, and deals with zoning and planning. So, so you would have the, the oversight. So a Select Board couldn't just come and kind of decide to do whatever they want to do. They've, they've got to come before the Planning Board, which is the other duly elected body to, you know, to review this stuff and make sure that it's in the public interest and then, of course, bring it to town meeting to get approval. We thought, we thought that was the most inclusive and deliberative way to, to make sure that we can do with having some flexibility, but to make sure that we had other elected bodies overlooking this and making sure that, you know, people were in agreement with, that it was in the best interest of the, of the residents for the, you know, for any reduction in, in, in frontage. And then if, if by any means we needed to do some, some adjustments to setbacks, we would bring it to this body to do that, because I think our intent is really not to adjust any setback ever. Unless it really becomes a situation where it's in the best interest of the community and that, that, and we need to have a deliberative process and, and, and your body is the best body to do that, because it's elected and it deals with, you know, with this issue specifically.
Are there other comments from the public? Or the Planning Board?
I don't see anybody's hands up, so no.
Again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, again, understand why municipal projects would be different from any other projects in that zone.
In which zone, Annalee?
Well, the zone that they're talking about, which is what, CRVD, right?
Right. Well, if I could take a stab at it, I, I think it's because municipal projects aren't to the benefit, to the financial benefit of anybody, they're for the benefit of the full, the town. So we're making, we're making some flex in our zoning bylaws, which we, we feel sets up our town to serve our town, but so do the municipal projects. And so if we're going to allow any flexibility, it would be to those very projects that benefit everybody. The library, senior housing, whatever goes on those projects. We also are sitting on a good, I mean, a good chunk of publicly owned property that we want to make use of. And this, I think, my sense is that this allows us some, some more flexibility, ergo, more usage of the property that, the Brabird property, we've been looking at it and looking at it. We look at it for everything, look at it for the library, we look, everything that we could possibly do with that property, we, we've tried. And it's just going to sit there, landlocked, if we don't actually shake it a bit. So, I, I'm sorry, I sound like a opponent, because I am always nervous about, you know, the kind of quick fix, but I don't know that this is a quick fix. I think this is something that we see is, I mean, I'm, I don't think it's a quick fix, but I, I'm willing to hear anybody else speak on that.
The other thing with municipal projects, I just wanted to add, is that anything has to go through town meeting for financial support of the project. So it, it would already be supported in the town by townspeople if they have voted money for a project. So we feel like, you know, the flexibility, it isn't just that we're allowing the municipal, you know, flexibility here, but it's also, you know, you've gone through several hoops of support for a project that's going forward that would utilize this 50-foot frontage.
Andrea?
I'm wondering.
I'm wondering, we are reducing it to fifty from seventy-five?
No, one hundred.
One hundred.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to look at the map for the North Main Street parcels?
I would, yeah.
Yeah. Can you see that okay?
Not yet.
You guys can't see that on your screen or you can?
We can, John, thank you.
So when we look at North Main Street, this parcel that's highlighted is one of the town parcels. This secondary one back here is the town's parcel as well. So those total about six point one seven acres. We see the Tilton Library is right here. We know the center of town is right down a little bit. There is a tiny access point to the Brabham lot, we know that. As we actually scan in, we know it's about thirty-five feet wide off of Brabham Road. The problem is, is Brabham Road in itself is extremely narrow. It's even more narrow than that thirty-five feet. So to get any vehicular traffic in here with an ambulance or a fire truck is, you know, very, very heavy risk wise. You can only get one vehicle in, you cannot bypass another vehicle coming out. So I think for any public safety reason, we never really could grant that as a primary right away as we develop that parcel. So I don't think anybody in any reasonableness would ask you to lower the threshold down to thirty-five feet. What we need to look for is the town to exercise good use of this property is when one of these neighbors up here on North Main Streets decides to sell their property, we really want to try and look and put an access road in between the houses. Whether we take down a garage, we leave the house up, and we put a fifty foot right away in there. We know a standard travel lane is eleven feet wide, so two travel lanes are twenty-two feet wide. We throw in some breakdown lanes and some sidewalk and instantly we're at forty to fifty feet wide without any problems, not even associated landscaping. So that's really where the fifty feet comes from. It really gives the town some, some latitude and movement to try and access this parcel. The goal is to keep the senior housing and senior citizens downtown where they can walk to the senior center, the town hall, the Tilton Library, grab groceries, they're on the bus route, and pretty much have everything at their fingertips. So as we look at the municipal parcels and the projects up and coming, I think this does make sense as a whole. This was recommended by our town council. And it is, I can't say it's quite frequent across the state, but, you know, Lisa had seen it quite a few times where there was a diminished frontage requirement for municipal facilities for the exact reason that Carolyn said. All this does have to go through town meeting, it's subject to extensive review. And the townsfolk really give input on it to the planning board, the select board, town meeting, finance committee, capital improvement planning committee. It's subject all the way through. So I think that was the basis behind it. And if I'm missing anything, let me know.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, yeah, my pleasure. And I can zoom in if you guys want to look more or if you actually want to see, you'll see the frontage in one second as soon as it loads it, you should actually see the size.
I think it's helpful to see for this particular property, but also trying to think broadly.
Yeah, so we see some of the properties have seventy-eight point seven two feet of frontage, one's got ninety-five, one's got a hundred and ten. So if you really start dividing off fifty-foot access road, the question is, is do you take down a house? Or do you take down this back garage if this person eventually decides to sell? Leave the house in place, divide off an access road through here of fifty feet, leave the house intact and resell that to someone else moving into Deerfield. And then we have a nice fifty-foot right of access into this six point one seven acres. Yep, back here.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Denise?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, you apparently must know who owns that property. Are they interested in selling it? Have they been approached?
This is Peter's property, it was actually his dad, Les Thomas. Les taught at Frontier Regional for thirty-something years. Amazing, amazing gentleman. Peter lives up in, I think Vermont or New Hampshire, Carolyn knows him very well.
Vermont, Vermont.
Yeah, he, he may eventually part with it. And, you know, I think a lot of us are very historic in, in our thoughts where we really have a problem taking down a house. Don't want to take down a house. But a lot of us for future development don't mind taking down a barn out back. We don't mind taking down a garage. And this fifty-foot of frontage actually gives us a lot of latitude when it's a municipal project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Kathy? Thank you.
Is, is there any one of these more favorable than another? I mean, so this individual is known and he's known to not live on, in the property. Is there any one of those that is more favorable than another?
I, I have to say, it's one step at a time. And, you know, it's, there has been some conversations, but, you know, they're pretty confidential. So I, I don't want to say too much, but we're hopeful that we can get access to that property.
Well, again, I think too, we're, we're looking at this broadly, you know, in a, in a broad range. It is number of properties that would be impacted.
And that, and that could be, yes. I, I would against, give an example of the Cumberland Farms.
Right. Denise, did you have something else to say?
You know, I was just thinking, I mean, I have no, I have no problem. I echo what Rachel said, I think we should be able to utilize the existing property for the town. I mean, once again, it's not for anybody's private gain. So, you know, just because of, you know, the configuration of, of the town, I mean, there's only so much we can do. So I think if we, if we wouldn't approve it, I mean, it's, it's just, it just puts us in a bad position. So I, I, you know, would vote to move forward on that.
Kathy?
When a vote stays.
So were there any other concerns about that Brabham property other than a right of way, a right of access? Was there flooding? Was there, was there anything other than that just?
It's dry, it's dry property. You know, we, and we've had it for a number of years. So it's been before the senior housing committee for a number of years. But Brabham is just not appropriate. It's, it can't handle additional traffic and it certainly can't handle emergency vehicles. And if you're putting senior housing complex in, we, we would have small, in, in, in the scope of senior housing, it would be a small amount of units, you know, under twenty. But even so, you would want to make sure you had the availability of an ambulance twenty-four, seven, all year round. And, you know, in the wintertime, especially in a bad weather. And, I mean, that road is very, very narrow. So we'd have to come up with some other, you know, you can have that as a secondary access and, and a way out. But you still need a primary access that is safe and would be available twenty-four, seven, all year round.
We've really just been hanging it over the last couple of years, you know, to keep the, keep it from getting out of control. They just go in and hay it every, you know, once a year.
It was, it was gifted to us for senior housing and we just have not been able to pursue it.
But the, 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 the land itself is suitable to build on. There's, there's no other issues with it. It's really, it's really an access safety issue.
Right, it's on sewer, it's on water potentially. And so it's, it's good for senior housing.
Nice.
To Kathy's point, it's not in a floodplain. You know, you have the normal water table that the whole South Deerfield has. But it's not considered wetland.
Right, although, I mean, and I think this is really interesting to, to consider. That's not really the issue that's before us right now, which is general bylaw, which could have to do with any municipal properties.
Correct.
And have far reaching effects with that. Are there any other public comments, Jennifer?
I just want, I don't want to be a stickler, but for minutes purposes, if you could just state your name now that we have two Cathys. Just if you could straight your first and last name, the Cathys. And, yeah, just so it's clear in a minute.
Thank you.
Yeah, they straightened it out, they both want to be Kathleen now.
I'll be, I'll be.
Kath.
Just do Kathy S. and Kathy W. Let's do that, make it easy.
Well, I've had this problem my whole life as a Jennifer, let me tell you. Debbie Schreiber has her hand up.
Debbie?
Well, just my only comment had been, or concern had been earlier, I mean, before the meeting, was really around the question of, you know, granting a broad, you know, change in, you know, for all municipal properties. But I, I, I really like the fact that, you know, everything that is going to happen under this, potentially we'd have to come back to the planning board, would have to be reviewed by any other relevant boards in the community. Would have to go before the town voters in the town meeting. So there's nothing automatic in the exercise of, of this activity. And anything that it would, that this relaxed frontage requirement would grant doesn't therefore give a, a specified right of any particular type of development or activity without really going through a vetting process that involves the public. And that, that all makes, just makes good sense to me.
Well, you know, whether it's expenditure for actual engineering or expenditure for actual building, all that stuff has to go through town meeting. So it would enjoy a broad based support in the town for our project to move forward anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, if we apparently don't have any, or do we have any other comments? Thank you.
Just one side note, if anybody sees a for sale sign on a house on North Main Street, can you please let the select board know right away? Because, yeah, there's nothing major in the works right now for any right of access. But if you see one out there, please let us know.
All right, good. All right, well then, if there is no further discussion, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Kathy Sylvester making a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Kathy Sylvester.
Rachel Blaine, I second.
Thanks, Rachel. Any discussion? So let's see, the vote then will have Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, I.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, I.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, I.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, I.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, I.
Emily Wolfcoy, I. So our, our public meeting is closed, our public hearing is closed. So now we'll have deliberations with the planning board. And some further comments, I appreciate that. I think just about everyone spoke during public hearing, but no, apparently no other comments for our deliberations. So then we need to craft, what is our, our motion? I, I believe it would be to approve the proposed.
It would be to recommend the amendment.
To the town.
Yeah, put on the town warrant for town review.
Okay, so could we have a motion to recommend this amendment to go to the town warrant? Denise Mason?
I make a recommendation to move this.
Doning bylaws one, seven, nine, two, three hundred dimensional requirements. By adding a new superscript nine after principal use in the heading of the principal use column and adding a new definition of superscript nine at the end of the notes section. That's what we're moving.
Thank you, Rachel.
Need to approve.
And I will read that for our next.
And I, I'll second it.
Okay. Thanks for the help, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. Any discussion? Okay, so back to alphabet, Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, I.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, I.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, I.
Kathy Witroba, or Kathy Sylvester, sorry. Oops, I think we heard you almost. There we go.
I.
There we go, you have a lag there, Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, I.
And Annalee Wolfcoy, so the, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for your help and assistance.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, moving forward, okay. Um, now we have another public hearing. This one on, for the proposed amendment to Deerfield zoning bylaws, chapter one, seventy-five, replacing section twenty-two, forty-four in its entirety with a new section thirty-nine hundred. Accessory apartments, including thirty-nine, ten, purpose, thirty-nine, twenty, definitions, thirty-nine, thirty, accessory apartment standards, thirty-nine, forty, application procedures, thirty-nine, fifty, transfer of ownership of a dwelling with an accessory apartment, and twenty-two, thirty, the use regulation. So I will open the public hearing with sort of the introduction that this was an amendment that we have already, or a change that we have already voted to move forward to the warrant. However, we then subsequently realized that there was an error in the, some of the postings. And so to be on the best side of caution, the planning board is, did correct the postings, re-posted. And now we have another public hearing, which of course could be about the postings or any, anything else about this amendment. So, um, could, if we have any discussion, are there? Maybe Jen, you can help with people who have their hands raised or whatnot?
Sure, nobody has it yet. Jeff Upton?
Mr. Upton?
Yes, I have, I have several questions to be honest with you. I understand our existing bylaw right now allows for by right in law apartments, correct?
Um, yeah, we don't, but it's my right, correct? We don't necessarily.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Now, now, with this proposed bylaw though, now you're talking, and those are attached. Now we're also introducing freestanding dwellings up to nine hundred square feet, is that correct?
Correct, they can be detached.
So they can be detached, so that nine hundred square feet is area.
It's up to the smaller.
Up to nine hundred square feet.
Well, it's up to the smaller of nine hundred square feet or the, or half the footprint.
Cent, right. Now that's just living area, correct? That does not include the garage area? So if somebody wanted to, if they had the size house, they could technically build a freestanding dwelling on their, on their piece of property as long as it's what, ten, fifteen feet away from their neighbor? Up to nine hundred feet? And then they can also add on a two or three car garage? Is that my understanding?
I don't.
The way I read.
The garage, I mean.
That's what I'm reading.
Garages here. Uh, planning board? I mean.
Want to build a garage, you know, within our, it is in our bylaws to build a garage, a freestanding garage.
I'm, I'm saying, Rachel, I'm saying building a house. with 900 square feet of living area, if the existing house allows it. And then on top of that, you can also attach a two or three car garage on that 900 square foot house. Because the way I read it here, it says, and under the floor area on the first page, the finished area above grade floors and residential structure excluding unfinished areas with ceiling heights less than seven feet, attics, unfinished areas of heated space and attached or detached garage. That leads me to believe that that's excluded. They can, they can add on, on top of the 900 square feet, they could add on a two or three car garage and still be within this bylaw. So you could have quite, quite the size of a dwelling there on that. So I'm, I'm a little concerned. There's, there's several issues that I have with this bylaw. And especially, I don't have a problem with the in-law apartments because those are already allowed in town. We've been doing those for years. What I have a problem with is the freestanding dwellings on a lot that has already an existing single residential unit on it. And I will pull up my list here very quickly for you.
I'm.
These are some things, these are some of the things I have concerns with. And I, I know it's going to be a little long, but please let me speak because this is critical to the town of Deerfield. One, we've talked about and we've already experienced in the past and we're in a lawsuit right now because of the rural community living. People don't want to ru- ruin the rural characteristic of it. Number two, how many free dwellings are we going to allow? How many potential free dwellings are we going to allow in the town of Deerfield? Are we saying that anybody that has a residential house has the right to put a freestanding dwelling on their property? Driveways. Are driveways going to be a, a shared driveway for each lot? Or are there going to be an additional driveway depending on where that freestanding dwelling is located? Which means an additional curb cut. Three, we've talked about this before, traffic. Increase in traffic in congested areas if we're allowing freestanding dwellings to be added in, in the area. Another, off-street parking during the winter time. Where, where are we going to? We already have issues when there's, uh, snowstorms in the evenings. Next one, high water tables. The whole town of Deerfield is sitting on a high water table. Again, it's been brought up by a, a group here and it's Deerfield Responsible Development. What's going to happen with all the runoff on the water when you start digging cellar holes? Next, septic, as far as sewer, whether it be town or septic. Are it, are the people with this free dwelling going to be able to tire, tie into their own town sewer? Or are they going to have to go out on the street to tie into their town sewer? And if that's the case, is there going to be an additional charge? My understanding is White, Mark Whitman got charged $1,100 per connection. Is that going to happen? Septic systems. Septic systems on these lots, when people bought these lots and built their homes, they were built and the design was done for a specific number of bedrooms. Now we're changing the game in midstream. It sounds like a bait and switch. So now are we going to have to go back? And if you're allowing two bedrooms, are we going to have to go back and design a whole new septic system for the two-bedroom freestanding dwelling? Going to have to go through perk tests, EPA regulations, title fives, and so on, so forth. Property values. You had mentioned on the first page that, uh, in number three, protect, this is one of the purposes, protect stability, property values and the residential character of a neighborhood. I would love to have somebody explain to me how you're going to be able to do that when you're adding freestanding dwellings on lots that were built or, or the requirements for lots for one residential structure on them. When people applied, when people bought those lots and built, they had to meet certain requirements, certain qualifications on those lots. And now there's no way that you're going to be able to do that. I would like to hear that. I've, I've got a building background of about 50, 55 years. And there's no way that you're going to be able to build single dwellings on existing properties and be able to protect your property values. They will go down. I will guarantee you that. And then you have, uh, up to 900 square feet, which I already talked about before, plus the garage. And that's within the 50% realm. Another item that I want to share with you is last year, an annual town meeting in the floodplain, it was voted and approved that anybody in the floodplain, if they wanted to add on, could only add on 25, up to 25%, increase in their footprint, up to 25%. So you're going to tell the people in the floodplain regions that they can only increase their footprint by 25%. Does that stand for free? Also freestanding? And yet at the same time, everybody else saw that floodplain can increase their property by 50%? That sounds a little discriminatory to me. The next thing, you're allowing, if you allow two-bedroom developed properties, single family or whatever. Now I'm not talking in-law apartments here. I'm talking about rental and that. Two-family or two, two-bedroom. Let's say that, uh, whoever moves into that dwelling brings along two kids. Two kids, a minimum for education is going to be cost of the town over $30,000. Tax, what you would get for that two, that dwelling? You might get maybe about $2,000 in addition taxes. It's going to cost the taxpayers of the town to cover those expenses. Your town, the way I see it, when people applied and met those requirements for their building lots, they were understanding that that would be, they had to conform to those. The town would be breaking contract requirements for building prints granted in years past plus septic systems and which could lead to invasion of privacy of existing homeowners and then impact on, uh, the quality of life. Now, the next question is, when does an attached dwelling become a classified as a two-family? Can somebody explain that? How, how does an attached dwelling, if it's not an in-law apartment, if it's a rental apartment, then that doesn't, does that not qualify for a two-family house? We already talked, there's committees that are looking into senior housing right now at this time. If we're going to do senior housing, low income or affordable housing, the town should plan accordingly and pursue grant money through state and federal for assistance. It should not be done helter-skelter throughout the town with a lack of organized planning. And those are my concerns that this proposed bylaw leaves wide open and it is dangerous as far as I'm concerned to the town of Deerfield. So that's just some of it. And also, by the way, as I read through this, you have some conflicting language in some of your paragraphs. And I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just saying, and I'm being upfront, I do not, I support in-law apartments, no problem. Under the existing bylaw, great, but I do not support, uh, the freestanding dwellings. So I think, I think it's dangerous for the town. I think it'll, uh, have an adverse impact on property values for the people that have invested in their homes and in their properties and spent money to keep them up looking nice. So, thank you. That's where I stand. If anybody wants to address some of those concerns, I'd love to hear it.
It's, yeah, that's, um, thank you, Mr. Upton. You clearly have studied this carefully and, um, you know, often we try to be able to respond after comments. This is quite a list though. So I'm trying to think.
Oh, one, one, uh, so let me just, um, because I, I hear lots of, um, good things in, uh, Mr. Upton's concern. Hi, Jeff. The detached apartments, I think that there may be clarity about this in terms of being over a garage, say that it's detached because the in-law apartment is over a garage. It's not actually part of the home. And so I think that it may be that we want to shore up that so it doesn't look like we are opening up the opportunity for a homeowner to put up a detached. And I think we want to talk about that. This came up once before. The detached, I, I, the idea of a detached accessory apartment has more to do with existing, I think, properties, um, existing structures. And so maybe that's a place that we want to look at that. I, I, I want to just push back a tiny bit on our current. Our current bylaw is not, it is only for family members. So once the family member, you build a little apartment for your son and daughter-in-law, they move out. Then that is no longer an apartment. So that's the important thing. I mean, that's one of the features of our, our current bylaw that is, um, causes some, some, um, pushback. Um, and I do think we want to look at the parking. There are two parking spaces, um, right now in the bylaw, and that may be something we want to talk about.
I do recall too, we did have some discussion about the septic and, um, that it should not be problematic, but I can't respond to that.
I'm not here tonight too. I, I kind of think he had some thoughts on that as well, the, uh, two meetings ago. Might be good to have him. Carolyn has her hand raised.
Carolyn?
Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, the septic issue is, is, it from a border health point of view is really serious because usually the septic designs are based on the bedroom. So if you're adding a bedroom, probably the septic's wouldn't be so much impacted. However, if you're a- adding another separate dwelling, you know, you probably are going to have more than one bedroom. So two bedrooms are going to impact the septic systems quite a bit, but I, I guess I just wanted to say that, um, the intent of this bylaw is really, really good. And I know the accessory apartment or the in-law apartment that we have written has, has issues. And I was hoping, because I've received a number of complaints that, um, mostly along the lines of what Jeff has already brought up, so we don't need to go over them again. But, um, what I was hoping is that we could table this, you as this, as the planning board would recommend tabling this and, um, for either the fall town meeting or next spring town meeting, and that we would take some time to look at the current accessory, um, you know, in-law apartment that we have bylaw and then combine it with what you have proposed. And, and know all the issues and try to address all these issues because this, this seriously will have town-wide, you know, impact on all people's property. And I know one of the persons that complained to me accused me of having the ability to build a second dwelling on Upper Road and then renting out my house. And if, if I was going to build 150 or $200,000 small dwelling and then rent out my house, it would, it seems ridiculous if you were trying to address affordability. Um, so I just want to state that I'm certainly not in support of this for my personal benefit, but I, I think you have to look at it at each individual parcel, especially out in the residential agricultural area. You have potential to have multiple little buildings coming, springing up. And I think that is a, is a real issue, um, from multiple different concerns. So I'm, I'm, like I said, I don't think it's written really well that we wouldn't cause so many problems from a, a regulatory point of view for our building inspector, our border health, and ultimately the residents themselves as they have these smaller buildings being put up all over the place. And, and I, but the, I understand the intent. The intent is to have affordable housing. But if you're building a separate building and the cost of building that separate building, especially if you replace the septic system, there's no way that that is going to increase or enhance affordability. People are going to do market value and you know, so it's, it's not really going to address what, what the intent is or, or what people's good intentions are. So I would like to take some more time since this is so impactful. I'm hoping this will be tabled.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, Ms. Muntzen?
Hi, um, I, I am very excited about this potential for having freestanding. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm very interested in it. Um, and I'm wondering, has the committee reached out to other towns that have already put this in place?
Well, um, yes, definitely. Much of the, um, many of the changes were taken from, um, research with other towns and my understanding from Chris Curtis, who has worked on this considerably is that the towns have found it to be, in fact, an enhancement to the town and, um, in a positive way for being able to create, especially create, uh, housing when people, so that people who live in, live in the town or people who work in the town can live in the town. But, yes.
Because it, it would seem that some of the questions that were just, or the concerns that were just voiced may have already been looked at and, and, um, you know, could be, could be answered. We have an eight acre parcel and a house that is around 1,400 square feet. So the way I'm reading this, I wouldn't be able to put a 900 square foot. Even though I have plenty of room, town, water, sewer, I would not be able to put, you know, more than a 700 foot. So if, if I wanted to create a single level house that I could live in with my husband and then maybe have a child live in our house, our, you know, a family live in our house, a family member. I wouldn't be, so I'm looking at the 700 square foot that I'd be able to build as being too small, that it, that, you know, I don't think I would bother doing it. Whereas even 900 square feet. So when I was looking at, um, I believe if I'm reading the town in Northampton correctly, that they just have up to 900 square feet. So they, I don't know if they have, I'm reading right now here, it says, is not larger than, in floor area than one half the floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 feet, whichever is smaller. So it would seem to me that a lot of this would just be dictated by the lots that are available and you know, the, the utilities that are available. And whether or not you could have either another water source or share a water source or if your property could have a septic system. or if your property could have a septic system, you know, an additional septic. Because even, even if you have a, let's say if you have a three-bedroom home and you're adding in an accessory apartment to it and you're adding one or two bedrooms and you only have a three-bedroom septic system, wouldn't you need to expand that septic system that you already have to make it, you know, a four-bedroom or more so that you could get the gal, you know, you'd have the uh, the flow that you needed there. The, you know, the perk, the uh percolation rate to be correct. So, so I, it just seems like a lot of these questions maybe have already been, been looked at. And so, so some of the concerns might, you know, it just, it just might be that the, the answers are already there.
Thank you. Yes. Um, and I wish we could give more of the answers tonight. And I think that um, that won't happen, especially for the a good, a good list of, of questions. Um, do we have some, any other, other comments from the public?
Yes, Jeff Upton.
Mr. Upton?
Raising my hand? Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to address that. I, and I understand where she's coming from. Uh, comment's very good as far as the house and the property. But not all properties in Deerfield are eight acres. And yet at the same time, uh, I didn't see any place there other than existing bylaws that are going to eliminate which properties can do a single dwelling and which can't. You know, as far as conforming, what are the, what are the guidelines? And we're trying to talk about affordable housing here. Just to let you know that that's kind of a pipe dream. Because right now, your, your, your square foot, per square foot is running anywhere from about two twenty-five to two seventy-five per square foot. So if you're talking, you know, like around a nine hundred uh square foot dwelling, up to a nine hundred square foot dwelling, now you're getting up into two hundred thousand dollar range. And that has nothing to do with the garage, that has nothing to do with driveway, that has nothing to do with septic system. And it's fine if you're dealing with family. But let me ask you this. What happens if a developer comes in and starts buying the property and throwing single, single dwelling units in here and renting them out to anybody and everybody that is not family? And then what do you do? You know, you, you, as, as I said before, you talk about community. You talk about the character of a community, the development, property values. I don't see how, how that's going to help your property values. And to be honest with you, I don't really care, I don't really care what other towns are doing. Because I know there's been issues uh in, in negative also. And I still quite going back to question number three, as far, or comment number three, as far as the uh purpose protects the building, property values in the residential character, character of a neighborhood. Show me how freestanding developments can do that. And I just, I, sorry, I've been in the building business for fifty-some-odd years. Been around it and that doesn't happen. So, I, I'm just not, I'm not, you know, I'm not buying the, as I said, I'm not, I don't have an issue with the in-law stuff as far as apartments. What my issue is freestanding dwellings. That's the issue. Point blank, should not happen. That's a dangerous step for the town of Deerfield.
I, I will respond and then Denise, um, that the concern of developers coming in and then renting them out. We did very much address this from the standpoint of the requirement that one of the two units must be owner occupied. And a um, feeling that that could help monitor some of the issues that people might be concerned about with having uh people who aren't, could be family members or not family members, but having an owner occupied requirement. Wasn't Denise?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, given all the, the public comment, which, I mean, there are quite a few issues it seems that the public has. I mean, Mr. Upton, I think Jeannie, um, Carolyn, you mentioned that. You know, I, I would like to make, to make a motion to table this. And so we can look into it further and to close this public hearing. I, I don't think we're going to come to any kind of consensus this evening.
Can I ask that we hear them? We have a couple hands up.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I didn't see that.
Let's hear those. Um, Mr. Wolfram and then Ms. Munson again.
Okay, uh, Dave Wolfram, uh, select board in town in Deerfield. I echo some of the concerns Carolyn has and Jeff has. One is the fact that these standalone dwellings would be two-bedroom. That would open a floodgate, a problem with the schools, I think, for us. I can understand maybe a one-bedroom. Freestanding is very expensive right now, as Jeff, uh, Jeff was mentioning. You know, I know, um, I just know her as Trixie's mom, so, um, but the uh, the uh, you know, I, my house is on a little less than an acre. My house is fifty-two hundred square feet. And I could put on, you know, the nine hundred square foot where my existing uh three-car garages. Wouldn't be economical for me. And if it was multiple, multiple bedrooms, I think, you know, that would cause an issue. And the other thing I see with this bylaw is it actually only restricts us to people that are on town sewer. Because if you're not on town sewer and you have to modify a septic system, almost all Title V's in Deerfield now that are being modified have to be a raised system. And that takes up an awful big footprint on a piece of property. You know, and most people don't have property that large for two dwellings and a large raise system. And I agree that, you know, we should probably table this to have further discussions on it.
Ms. Munson?
Well, I, I guess I was just going to reiterate, reiterate the, um, what I was reading here that, you know, even if a structure, even if a home was sold, that anybody that was, that was buying it would have to also agree that if they were going to be um, having somebody in the, um, let's say the free sit standing or the accessory unit would need to abide by the same, you know, fam, it be, be a family member and that it not be, um, and that it be, you know, not, let's say for short-term rental, it would be a long-term. You know, it, it would be a long-term thing. So you wouldn't have people renting and coming in and, and um, you know, using, using the property that way. It would be somebody that was living there for a long term. Um, and also just the intent, which, which I think is really lovely about this, which is to be able to keep people on their properties that want to stay on their properties. So that if you did have, um, you know, you were building some, something for somebody with mobility and you did have the room on your land to be able to put up a, um, a freestanding dwelling, that um, you, you know, uh, I just don't understand that with the, you know, adding bedrooms so that you might be increasing this, the, the number of kids that would be going to school would change other than, you, you know, just building that could happen in town too. So I just don't see it as being something that um, everybody's going to run out and do, just because they have the right to do it. I, I, you know, again, I, I, I'd be really interested to see how other towns have handled, handled some of these questions.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I, I just want to say, one of the issues that um, I, I had with this is there was, if you sold your house, say, you know, you were requiring family, you know, owner occupied. But how do you enforce this? The problem is we don't really have staff and this is not easy to enforce. So it would be complaint-driven and it would be a nightmare for us. We would be in housing court all the time. Because you would need a deed restriction. There's no requirement for deed restriction here that would be automatic. You know, owner occupied requirement. So from a, from a town point of view, like I said, there are so many, the intent is good. And I don't argue with the intent. We need more good affordable housing. But just reference to the schools is just, the select board, we, we constantly do budgets now. And I, you know, and it's because seventy percent of our budget is school-related expenses and, and it's not sustainable. So in any discussion, schools are always going to come up because it's affordability issue. But I don't want it to be the issue or the reason why we don't improve our accessory apartment, in-law apartment, or try to support affordable housing. That's not correct. I'm just concerned that this is not well-written and that the enforcement or the regulation of this is, is a nightmare for us as a town and not, again, is not, there's no requirement for, you know, a deed restriction or anything like that. So, I mean, those are the issues that we need to all sit down and address and take these issues one at a time and say, look, Greenfield has a, you know, a, a bylaw like this and they've ended up in court and they've had problems. So how do we avoid those problems? How do we figure out, we're not going to entail all kinds of legal expenses because the neighbor next door is fighting with whoever wants to do this? This is a nightmare from us, from a, you know, using legal fees and regulatory enforcement. So I'm, I'm just asking that it, we take some more time so that we can figure this out. That's all. Cause it's, it's going to be really, really hard for us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, Denise?
Yeah, just quickly, it, um, Jeff, since you had such an extensive list and since, since Annalee is taking the minutes, you know, we'll, we'll cobble together the minutes probably together tomorrow. Could you send that to her so that we have that? I think that would be helpful, your concerns?
Yes, I, I would be able, I, I could, uh, I could get that out. Well, I'd probably, probably within the next couple of days.
Okay.
Because I'm right out straight tomorrow. But if, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll send that out within the next couple of days.
I think that would be, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Uh, Jennifer?
Hi, I have a comment from St. Paul, A leaky for near. She says, in terms of general comment and concerns about accessory dwellings, there's a lack of consideration for eco-friendly, net-zero carbon footprint homesteads that would relieve residents of financial hardship. Just that comment.
Was that in the chat?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
Are there other comments?
I don't see anybody else's hands up. Um, I can make one other comment that we have talked about before is looking at doing a different rental bylaw. And that would help with um, tracking, you know, family members and, um, there would be a fee, but we could work on that in the future.
It would help also tracking the, the, the thing that Carolyn's talking about and actually address something that Jeff referred to too. But the, the enforcement and the, the organization, we talked about this with council. She suggested actually that we look into, um, and Bob was here at that time in that meeting, that we look into some sort of inventory idea um, in the bylaw that would help us to track those apartments. That he, you know, uh, well, obviously, he does the inspection. He is, he along with the, the select board, board of health, you know, works on these projects. Um, I don't think we want to come across frankly as anti-family. Um, I, I think we're verging on that when we talk about, you know, places that where families might move in and that's a problem. I appreciate the cost, but I also would like to point out that in, um, one of the reasons that we were pursuing this over long time is because we have a very low inventory of housing in our town that is, um, that at a, a, a price level that people working in the town can afford. Um, and so we do want to just stay on that. So I guess I'm, you know, I, I was deep sigh of relief. I am, I do, I don't know, are we, we had a discussion point here. But I do see this as a, a move forward. I think the detached, the language around detached dwellings, we might want to really look at again. I, I will, I will say once again that the cost is prohibitive. But people do spend it to move their families closer, to have an in-law apartment or to create apartment for a, a, a child, you know, his return to the area. But once that child moves on, once that parent moves on, that, that money is now just sitting in your backyard. Because those apartments are not available for rental. So that means that that, that is a, either, it puts the homeowner in a, an odd spot. So I don't even know that we are really truly promoting the in-law apartment for family members with this particular bylaw as it sits in front of us now. So, um, I do appreciate, and I, I would like to look more carefully at the parking and septic. I think, um, we have mentioned that here before. Um, any building would trigger that. So that's something, again, that would make this a very expensive endeavor. Um, and not something that somebody would jump into quickly. But I, I think we need to continue to pursue it. I think it's a
Yes.
It, it is not without an issue in the, in the town that that we already are facing, that we already confront.
Kathy, Retorba. Who is muted. Muted. There we go.
So sorry. Um, so from the notes I've taken and sort of what I've gathered, we have two groups of, of information here that we're looking at. We're looking at traffic, curb cuts, parking, septic, water table. But then we're also looking at enforcement, inventory, deed restrictions, schools, legal expenses, rental bylaws needed. So there's things that are actual to the development on a property. And then there's other issues that are related to the town and how this all functions. So I, I, I think it's probably fair to sort of make these lists of what the concerns are in each of those categories. I think that it's a category kind of issue. Otherwise, it's a huge mountain of where do we go and where do we start and how do we climb? I think sort of breaking it into these categories might help us.
I think that's helpful, Kathy. Thank you. David?
I'd just like to add a side note. I know what the bylaw is saying about relatives and everything. And I appreciate that and I understand that completely because probably a third of the town is related to me in some way or form. But um, the uh, I have a major concern with the fact when they do move out that that property would just stand vacant. I don't think the bylaw would survive a legal challenge under that aspect. I haven't talked to an attorney about it, but I have, I have concerns about it. Because if you put two hundred thousand dollars into a standalone accessory apartment and then you can't rent it afterwards when the relative moves out, my guts tell me we'd lose that in court.
That's the way it stands now, David.
I know. That's with the in-law apartment, which is different.
No, that, I mean, it's the same in our, in our bylaw right now. You can't rent it out.
Yeah, but that's putting an apartment within your own house. It's not a standalone.
Right, okay. Right. But any money that you put into your, you know, apartment in your home or in the garage that is attached above your garage.
Yeah.
Then that apartment, once your in-law, your child moves out, that apartment is no longer rentable.
Yeah, unless you're commercially is owned, but that's a different story. We don't want to get into that one. So, okay.
I think it's really clear that we're not, we know there are problems with what we have. But I'd like to look at how do we fix, what are the problems that we have now? And try to fix them or adjust this bylaw to address them specifically without creating a whole new pile of problems. That's all. And, and, like I said, I support the intent. I think nobody wants to I think nobody wants to, um, I mean, everybody wants to support your intent. Affordable housing and also, um, keeping seniors in our homes are, have always been. You know, I've been working on that for over 20 years. Not successful, believe me. We've tried multiple things and that accessory bylaw is one of the things that we tried to do. And we didn't write it well. And so what we have to do is, is, is put a lot of effort into this. I, I know this will mean many meetings. But I also feel that the intent is really, it is important. And so I feel like it is important for us to have many meetings on this and get people to participate.
Well, that's what I see as key, Carolyn. I've really appreciated the comments tonight at our previous, um. Public hearing. We had one. Family show up. Um, we have been discussing this, I believe, for probably over a year. I mean, I think Denise, though, wasn't it on the table even before we were elected to the planning board?
It's been on the table forever.
Yeah.
It's been on the table since, because there is, there is a potential for unfriendly development if you're not trying to. Our, our town does not meet a threshold for, um, you know, housing that is affordable to the residents.
Right.
I won't even call it affordable housing. I'm just saying, uh, housing that is affordable to the residents. And so it is, it is behooves us. Uh, legally speaking, actually, to keep moving forward with this. This is not a casual thing. I mean, it's not. You know, as Carolyn says, not to benefit Carolyn. It's, it's to benefit the town so that we can, you know, keep people coming through our town.
Right.
To work here. That's all. It's, it's important.
Yeah. And I think one of the challenges for the planning board as we move forward with this and other proposed bylaws is how in fact can we get more. Uh, public input as we work on their behalf and not have it all of a sudden be.
Contentious, I know.
And 28 days before town meeting and significant concerns. All right. Are there any other public comments? Oops, David.
Annalee, I'd just like to make one point. As much as I hate Zoom. This is actually increased public awareness and then a lot over. I mean, I sat, I don't know how many years on the Board of Selectment and maybe have one person in the gallery. Tonight we have what, 20 something? I mean, it's, it's.
Yes.
We get a lot more people involved this way.
Yes, I think it's hopeful. And I know the select board has talked about trying to, um, figure out ways that, uh, we might be able to have something hybrid. After we're all able to be back in town. I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
So.
We're gonna try.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Planning board, before we do anything about closing the hearing, I believe we have a couple of, of options. Um, one is, excuse me, one is, um. That we. Continue the public hearing to another date. Um, at which point we could actually even deliberate on some of these and, and discuss some of these concerns. Or we can close the public hearing and then deliberate on how we want to move forward. And, um. I think those are our options right now. Um, so, planning board, do you have any? Suggestions again to continue the public hearing until next meeting, which in fact could. Generate potentially some more comments or we could close the public hearing if we feel that. We have enough comments about this particular, uh. Bylaw proposal. And then we would go forward to vote on. Whether or not to. Take it forward to town meeting or to. Not take it forward or to change it and take it forward and, and have another public meeting, hearing. So I see, I see Rachel's deliberating. Don't Denise?
Well, yeah, at this point, I think it's premature to take it to, to town meeting. And if we do want more participation. I know, you know, it's been a while, but I know that for Greenfield, I mean, that they, I don't know if they still have huge problems, but. They, that was in the paper a lot, um. Doing a by right, um, separate dwelling. That was a huge issue and I, I'm not sure how they resolved that. Whether they made it so that it's no longer by right that it has to go before the planning board. So. I think it's premature to do that. I would encourage another public hearing and perhaps getting in touch with Mary Byrne, who covers our area. To. Do a little story. I don't know whether that's opening up Pandora's box.
No, I think, exactly right. I think that big issue, um, here is too, that we could look at Greenfield. Or we could look at Berniston, Berniston, and now sorry Buckland. Buckland has just liberated like their bylaw accessory, but that's a very different place. It's a, you know, so I think that every town has to come at this in their own way. Um. And I think that you're, you, you make a strong point, the.
So.
That we need more public comment.
Yes.
Are you saying then to have more, to continue the meeting for more public comment at our next meeting? Is that what you're?
It doesn't necessarily have to be at our next meeting. I, I would, I would postpone that a little further. Because I don't think we're going to be able to bring it to town meeting. So do we have to do it at the next meeting? I mean, is, is that, that maybe too soon? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I. I would, I think if we are choosing not to take it to town meeting. Then we would need to have a vote to that. I mean, to that effect. So. Perhaps what we're talking about then is closing this public hearing and then having, um, deliberation as to. Exactly what our next step is going to be. So if, if that sounds reasonable, if we can have a motion to close the public hearing.
Andrea Liebson, I move that we close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Andrea. Second?
Kathy Retroba seconded.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? No, okay. Um, so, uh, then I'll call the question, uh, Rachel Lane? Close the public hearing, I or no? May. Oh, she's thinking.
I don't know. Can you smell it?
Oh, what, did we say, did I say have discussion? More discussion?
We're voting to close the public hearing. Um. I vote no.
Uh, Andrea?
I don't see that what we have in the, um, in the proposed new bylaw will stand. And so. I'm happy, we should continue to have open, it's have more public hearings, but it can't be on this version.
That's.
So your vote would be?
So no, don't close the public hearing. Uh, uh, sorry, I'm afraid of, I'm a little confused about.
Let me just, can I just say that if we close this public hearing, it doesn't mean that we're trashing the, this version. We're closing it and then we have to vote on it. So the, the work we've done to create this version, I don't know if this, it, it is not, it's not like for naught. Um. It, it just means that we're going to go back to the drawing board. So.
Right. If we don't close the public hearing at our next meeting, we will have entertained more comments from the public. And at some point we would close the public hearing and either. This version or a simplified version of it could go forward to the town or we would pull it from the town.
Less, less, uh.
Yeah, yeah, less restrictive.
Restrictive.
Right.
So I, so, okay, so I was confused. I thought we were just closing this, but we would continue. So we should, we should keep the public hearing open. So. Could I retract my, my second? I'll just retract my, that I seconded.
Close the public hearing. I can retract, I can retract the closing the, uh, the motion.
I just think that we just need to continue to discuss it. We need to figure out what it looks like. If the standalone, honestly, if you look at it, the standalone feature, which seems to be, you know, people are most concerned about. That's not, um, an impossible thing to review. I think the parking is the other one. Septic again, yes, without a doubt. But any kind of building or, you know, change of use, we're going to look at that anyway. It's a special permit. So it may be that that's the, the issue and I, I think it's important for us to think about that. I'm not, I, I, we talked about it once before. Um, and kind of thinking it through in terms of what it looks like. We have it, we've been really talking as much as anything about apartments within people's homes, not separate.
Right.
Um. And that is, I mean, that's what they're doing in Buckland, but in Buckland, they don't have, it's, their neighbors aren't as close.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table though, to close the public hearing. And there has been one.
No.
No, and then one Andrea, we weren't, I wasn't quite sure.
So I guess I will vote no. We should not close the public here.
Okay, um. Denise?
Then no.
Kathy Sylvester?
Uh, I, I guess no, I, I'm completely full confused. Why can't we close the public hearing, rewrite it, open it up again? Are we not allowed to do that?
Want me to answer that, Annalee?
Go for it. Thank you.
So the reason you, the reason you would. Close, if you're considering that this needs to have a substantial change. Then it requires an entirely new notification process. So regardless of how you vote on this particular version, it would appear in listening to the conversation. That everyone's identified some concerns that need to be addressed. So even if you don't vote on this particular version, closing the hearing is a part of the hearing process. Um, if you do feel like you need to go back to the drawing board on some portions of it. Then you're going to have to go through a new notification process anyway. So it's. If you want to continue this discussion about this version. Then I would, oh, leave the, leave the hearing open. If you want to go back to the drawing board, then you can close this and, and take a vote to do exactly that.
Thank you, Casey.
Is that clear as mud?
No, can I just? Could I just offer a little planning board experience?
Sure.
Um, um, this, there is enough rewrite in this or enough concern about the rewrite. That you would have to repost. So my suggestion would be to close the hearing. And then, um, start work using this as a basis, but. Take Jeff's comments or whatever comments that came out tonight. Because you're going to have to publish this. Because if you don't, it will be not, it will not meet the Attorney General's posting requirements. It just needs one person to protest it and then it will be thrown out. All the work you've done will be thrown out. So my recommendation would be to be safe. Would be to close the hearing and then move forward with a new version. And, you know, not, not next month because I think Dollar General is on your. General next month. So say you're going to take it up in July or, you know, your July meeting. Or something like that. And then try to get a subcommittee. You know, Dave and I, you know, let us know, we'll, we'll come. You know, Jeff, invite Jeff to come and, and a few other people, whoever had comments to come. So that you have discussion on how to address your concerns. And then you can post and, and publish the correct, the corrections that you come up with. And that way it's clean and nobody can complain.
You get that in writing about the nobody complaining because I'd love to.
Oh, Rachel, no, I'm not.
Glad we didn't have all of this discussion before we started voting.
So am I voting or are you starting over?
You can withdraw the motion and then make a new motion if, if, you know. To start over. I'm, I'm, I'm trying not, I don't, I'm just, this was just advice.
The, the original motion was to close the public hearing. Andrea Liebson made that. I seconded that. And then we got a little confused and then we, then we decided to vote no on doing that. So we can now vote yes to close the public hearing. And that's where we'll be.
I vote. Um, the public hearing and start over personally.
Oh, that's Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. So you voted yes to close the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Kathy Retroba.
Well, this is, well, I mean, given. This is, this is a little tricky and not to, you know, elaborate, but there's a lot of work that is gone into the documents that we have and a lot of conversation and a lot of like. Settling this, but there's a lot that's come to light in this meeting. That's why these public meetings are so important. We really need this, this feedback. Because it, it takes, uh, it takes all these perspectives from the community to, to help. Create something that's meaningful that will actually be effective and work. I think given the conversation that we have had and the work that's still needs to be done, I would vote to close the meeting.
Which puts us in an interesting situation because. Because, uh, so.
The chair can break the vote because you don't need a super majority.
Can we also retract our votes?
Right. Only if I vote no.
Annalee, can we retract our votes? Because, you know, there, there was a, a big misunderstanding here. So I would retract my no vote and say yes to please close the hearing.
And I would do the same.
And I would do the same. I'm not even sure how. This is a little confusing. It's like, where, huh, I, I, right. So I mean, I think we've put, I think we have a great foundation, but there's clearly more building that needs to be done. And, and, and I, I see it at the, you know, the building level and I see it at the town level, right? This, it, it, and if we're, if we really are invested in creating something that's going to. Benefit the community, I think we really got to dig in and do some more work personally.
So I will also vote yes to close the public hearing. So we have. More or less five yeses and one no, maybe. Um, I believe. So the public hearing is closed. Which now means that we as the planning board have deliberations about what do we want to do with this? Do we still choose to, um, have it? Have this as is moved to town warrant? Do we choose to make it less restrictive and move to town warrant? Do we choose to make it more restrictive? At which point we would have to republish and repost and have another public hearing or perhaps do we. Choose to. Uh. Table it for future discussion. I, or not, I, I think, future work. I believe those are our options, only four options.
Okay, Annalee, I think we should table it to the future. I, you know, as Carolyn said, we have Dollar General next month and that's going to be enough. And, um, I think we should table it until July or August. And I think we should take any kind of public comment that we get in the meantime, including Jeff's, Carolyn's. Um, Jean's, Jeanie's, and, um, I think we should try and, you know, publish, you know, have something published in the recorder. And invite more comment in the meantime, you know, hold another public hearing later on. But don't take it to town meeting.
Session time.
Annalee, I, I just, uh, just a suggestion. Uh, again, the select board usually has a special town meeting in the fall. Sometime usually after a free cash has been certified, which is normally the end of September. Because of the lateness of the state budget and town meetings, et cetera, et cetera. I would think that's going to be a little bit later this year. So I would look at the later part of October. Or the beginning of the first week in November. So then what you want to do is backtrack from that, that timeframe. Say mid-October for, to be conservative. So you need to have something published in September. So if, if, you know, whatever work is done, should be done by the end of September. So you have plenty of time to publish it. For a public hearing to go on to a special term. So you have plenty of time to publish it for a public hearing to go on to a special town meeting warrant. So the best thing to do is to plan out when you want to do the work. So if you assume the Dollar General is going to take a little bit of time in June. Then you need to be saying, okay, in July, we will start working on this. And, and we might have to have an extra meeting in July and August. So that we can have a product for the town warrant by the end of September that will be able to be published. So I'm, again, I'm not trying to cause, you know, take over your meeting. But the idea is you would want a timeline that you would actually end up having. You know, a product that you could take to town meeting.
Right, right. I guess I would say as a side two that, um, Dollar General is not everything.
Right. So, but you could have, you could have a separate meetings for just the work of this bylaw. I think there's enough interest and enough concern in town that if, if it was published and advertised that this is what you're going to work on, people might participate. Like I, like Dave said, there is a lot more Zoom participation than ever before.
Um, I would like to entertain a motion to withdraw this bylaw from the warrant for the June 12th. Town meeting. No?
Casey's not here. I don't think we have to withdraw it.
Yeah.
Just don't have to put it forward.
It's already been.
Casey's here.
Oh.
Forward already?
Well, we put, we put it forward once and now we've had another public meeting.
Well, it has, it has, we closed the warrant and it has a placeholder.
Placeholder.
So you, you should vote to withdraw it and then our next.
That's what you want to do.
Right, because our next select board meeting, we would open the warrant, withdraw that warrant article, place saver. And, and then close it again. If that's what you want to do.
Yeah. That seems important that we all are in agreement, if that's what we are in agreement about. So that would be a motion to withdraw this proposed bylaw change from the warrant for the June 12th meeting. Someone?
Okay, I make a motion to remove this from the warrant for the June 12th meeting for the placeholder.
Thank you. I second it.
Thank you Kathy. Uh, do we have any discussion? And this is the point for discussion, not halfway through the.
Kathy Sylvester says, said that, seconded it.
Great, sorry about that.
Is there any discussion? All right. Rachel, aren't you glad you're at the top of the alphabetical list tonight?
Rachel Blaine. Um. I'm going to vote no. I think I'm going to leave the pressure on.
Okay. Andrea?
Andrea Liebson, I vote yes. I don't think we have enough information.
Denise Mason?
I suppose, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
And Annalee Wolfco, yes. So the, um. Motion passes. Okay. We have another zoning bylaw proposal. But this is a relatively, I, I believe a relatively easy one. Um, we, I, I think this, actually the select board a while ago, a number of months, if not years ago, decided to call themselves the select board instead of the Board of Selectmen. But my understanding is that it never really got officially put through with all, with the general laws as well as the zoning bylaws. So, um, general bylaws are going to be addressed about changing the terminology from Board of Selectmen to the select board. And we need to, um, have a, uh, uh, similar.
A hearing?
Here, a public hearing.
A hearing, yes.
Right. Uh, vote to have a public hearing to, um, address this and then, um, bring it forward to town meeting also. So, and that would in fact be the process. We'd have a public, it will be, it would be, we would vote on it tonight. It would be posted. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 7th. If it then is, we, if we move it forward to the town, um, meeting at that point, it would be approved at town meeting. And then some lucky soul gets to go through all the zoning bylaws and check, change all the, the garbage. So.
I, I just would like to say the, um, give you a little bit of background on this. The select board years ago voted to become a select board and not a Board of Selectmen. And what happened is our bond council, when we went to the USDA to borrow money for the sewer treatment plant. It, um, went through our bylaws and found that we did not change our bylaws from Board of Select, from Selectmen to Selectboard. And so this is to, um, so we can continue to borrow money from the USDA and get a grant, get the USDA grant, which is the most important thing. So, um, it is actually, it is a housekeeping thing, but it is extremely important from a financial impact. So I'm, I'm sorry that we have to go through this. We did not realize that we did not do this or this was part of it. But, um, it actually has tremendous impact and it is our USDA grant that is at risk if we don't do this. So thank you for taking time.
It is incredibly appropriate.
Annalee, can I just ask a question? So I, I, I totally agree. I've always had, I've had an issue with calling the select, select Board of Selectmen because obviously you're not a man. So are you going to be referred to as our select woman from now on?
They sound. We are just. Board member.
Okay.
Yeah, we are a select board member. We are sort of gender neutral.
That's great.
We, we've sort of always referred to us for many years that way. And then we finally realized that we had to do official vote. But then we never followed through with all the bylaw changes because it just never occurred to us, to tell you the truth.
I like the gender neutral. Thank you.
Yep.
Because you're not all men.
As a point of interest, it's probably the nicest thing people say about us in town.
One of those things that, oh man, that we have to do. Okay.
We want to do.
Yes.
We want to do. All right. So our next planning board meeting is scheduled for June 7th. So, um, and I don't believe there's terrible urgency to have the public hearing prior to that. So if everyone is in agreement, we'll have a public hearing on this at our planning board meeting on June 7. Good.
Also, just, you don't have to take a formal vote, but the consensus would be that you would be supportive of us keeping the select board, keeping a placeholder for this warrant article. Once you've had the public hearing.
Started there.
Oh.
Okay. No, but I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
Bond council.
I, I'm just asking that the planning board doesn't have any issue with that.
Do we need to do anything officially with that? I don't.
No.
Okay.
Because we're, with the select board controls the warrant. But I just wanted to make sure that nobody felt that we were jamming it down their throat. That's all.
No.
As long as everyone's okay with it.
Oh, yeah. It's just timing is.
Corrective action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe we have any other business not reasonably anticipated 40 hours prior, do we? No. Well then, our next meetings, um, everybody remember that on May 26th, the, um, select board is having a town meeting info night. And I don't know, I think the planning board is like monopolizing the whole evening. Her muster of it because we've got a lot of, um, bylaws that are coming forward. And this will be, this will in fact be an excellent opportunity for us to receive, you know, public comments about things. So everybody, if you can talk it up and certainly come and, um, let's hope we've got a Zoom that just comes that close to crashing because there's so many people. Um, so the May 26th, the select board town meeting info night, uh, June 7th. The planning board and June 12th, the town meeting. And, uh, if I don't hear anything else, if I could have a motion to adjourn.
Hey, I'm sorry, Annalee. Just one more thing. So this is a joint meeting and this is so we can reduce the comment during our town meeting, just to help people, to inform them. How are we going to inform the town that we are having this joint meeting? How, how are we going to get the word out? How's that happening?
I think that would be Carolyn and David.
We announced it, our, our select board meeting, it's put on the town website. It's on, would be on Facebook.
Okay.
The normal, I mean, the problem is there's very much different, people get their sources from very different.
Right.
Places. So it's very hard to, to get everybody, but we will do the normal explanation. And the, and the idea is to eliminate questions, not only in zoning, but the budget. And, you know, stuff so that, um, people can think about it. And, and, and we can anticipate some of the questions. Because it's very hard sometimes to get a question out of the blue that maybe you hadn't even thought about. So, um, the idea is to sort of get an anticipation of the kind of questions. And so that you'll have, your presentation can be geared to, um, you know, what people's concerns are.
Great, thank you.
Um, hopefully, uh, maybe you've already planned a robocall, but that would be nice. It would also take ahead to the town meeting.
Yeah.
What, what we would do is do one combined robocall that would, you know, remind people that town meeting is June 12th. And that we have the info night on May 26th.
Do we have, Annalee, do we have any, um, any word from Dollar General about this art meeting in June?
Jennifer?
I just wanted to remind the board that even for the information night, we had those little blurbs that are going to go to the select, that we need 12 days before town meeting. So that would be, okay, thank you.
All right, uh, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, should we talk about how those blurbs are going to get written?
Oh, well, we did last, at our last meeting.
I know.
Oh, that, um, Lily Dwight and.
Going to do.
I have worked together on the one for formula based businesses. Chris is working on the solar and accessory. And, uh, site plan review and the, um, you know, I think. Yeah, Casey, you'll be working with, I mean, I don't think there's much with the select board, Board of Selectmen and the, um, dimensional use would be coming through, Casey.
Select board, okay.
Yeah, we can, we could do something quick. I mean, there isn't too much to say one way or the other, but we can certainly.
All right.
You know, have a, have a little, you know, soundbite for both of them.
Right. This, this is for the, uh, the 26th as well as the booklet that's going out to the, um, residents.
Basically, it allows us to create the talking points that we can use and refine.
All right.
Carolyn, you want to make a motion to adjourn the select board?
Yes, I will make, this is Carolyn Ness. I will make the motion to, um, adjourn the select board meeting.
Dave Wolfram seconded. All those in favor?
Hi Carolyn Ness.
Hi Dave Wolfram.
All right.
Thank you for a good evening.
During the planning board.
Wait, did you?
Rachel Blaine.
I second that.
All right, uh, you, you know the alphabet now, Rachel?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Um, Denise, no, not Denise.
Andrea.
Andrew.
Andrew, yes.
Andrea Liebson, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Emily Wolfco, yes. All right, the meeting is.
Thank you, thank you all for being, uh, sharing the meeting with us tonight.
Oh, you're welcome.
Like to play well with others, Carolyn.
It's very pleasant, actually. I just want you to know. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye. See you tomorrow.